Welcome back, everyone. We will resume our meeting at this time. And I will open the public hearing that is scheduled on the proposed amendment to KAR 91-1-214, Criminal History Records Check Regulation. In accordance with board policy, anyone who wishes to speak at the hearing is asked to complete an information card at the reception desk located at the entrance to this room. Each speaker will have three minutes to make his or her presentation, and one minute will be allowed for board members to ask questions. Written comments may be submitted as part of the hearing. Each person should state his or her name and indicate whether he or she is representing the opinion of a group. At this time, I do not have any cards for anyone to speak at the hearing on the Criminal History Records Check Regulation. Am I missing anyone? In that event, at this point, I will conclude the public hearing on Criminal History Records Check Regulation, KAR 91-1-214. Now, the second issue, I would like to open the public hearing on the proposed amendments to KAR 91-1-200, 91-1-201, 91-1-202, 91-1-203, 91-1-204, and 91-1-220 on licensure. Do we have any speakers scheduled for this public hearing? In that event, at this point, I will conclude the public hearing. And this is a good opportunity for us to move forward with the second part of our presentation on assessment. And I believe Beth was scheduled to do this for us, so we'll allow you to go ahead when you're ready, Beth. Thank you.
I'm just going to give you a brief update on the assessment timeline. 2014 assessments, as you've heard this morning, the waiver was approved, and we're not -- we will not be reporting any assessment data for 2014. However, we still have to release a building report card. And that report card, we're starting to work on that on Friday. I have a group of people in the agency working on it. And we'll be going through the federal regulations to find out what we do have to release. We know that graduation rate has -- the graduation data has to be released, and there's some other title and special education things that would be included. So we'll be working on that and then bringing that back to you to see later on. The other thing, that even though we didn't have any -- Even though we didn't have any assessment data to release, CETE has promised us some reports on how students did, just in general, on a few released items in the state. So this is a link to the kansasassessments.org page at CETE, and there are its instructions if you want to follow that and go on and review the reports. The reports are grades three through eight in the high school. There's two released items per subject, so two for math, two for language arts in each grade. Then I wanted to show you a sample of what one of the items looks like. So this is a sixth grade math item that we released, and it says that approximately 55 percent of the students in Kansas answered this item correctly. Remember that, not for the current year that we're in, for 2015, but in 2016, then we'll have an adaptive test. And so it just gives you a little bit of idea, if the item were to adapt, that if you look at this question, if it were to adapt down, then within this same target, then students would be asked to order rational numbers. Or if it were to adapt higher level, then they would be asked to identify and compare rational numbers and absolute values on a number line. So that just gives you a little bit of idea, within the target, what a question looks like, how students did on the item, and if it were to adapt either way, what you might see. So again, it's two released items per grade, per subject, and the instructions of how to access that on the CET website is on the first slide. The 2015 assessments, we're already full-blown preparation for this. So the window will open March 9th, and will close on May 15th. We'll be testing English Language Arts and Math in grades three through eight and grade 10. Science in 2015 will be grades four, seven, and 11. And History Government, we're going to test grades six, eight, and 11. So even though we're doing English Language Arts and Math at 10th grade, Science and the History Government will not change. They'll still stay 11th grade tests. And I would point out to you that then next year, we anticipate the Science assessment moving to grades five and eight instead of four and seven. Okay, so just to let you know the format of the assessment, the first part of the assessment will be machine scored. All students will take a 25-item block of questions. And then this year, parts two and three, they will not adapt. In the future, they'll be adapted, but this year, it's just the same types of questions for all kids. That would be 15 machine scored items each section. And then the fourth part of the test every year, it's built into the time schedule, that we will field test 15 new items. And that way, we'll be able to release some items with some information every year, and we'll be able to replenish the testing pool as we move forward. The performance task, we'll be giving a performance task in grades three through eight in Math and English Language Arts. For the 2015 school year, there will not be a performance task in grade 10. That decision to move the task from 11th grade to 10th grade was made so late in the preparation of the test that we weren't really able to get all the items written and to go through all the reviews and everything they have to before we could do that. So there won't be a performance task in grade 10 this year. Grade 11 will have a performance task in History Government, but not in Science. And there's no performance task at all in any of the sciences, so four, seven, or 11, no performance task in 2015. The Science test is basically, we're still using the old test, which used to be a two-part test, and they pulled the items that weren't applicable with the new standards. And so we're still in that transition period with using the best items we could from the old test as we develop a new test for Science. So no performance task for Science. Okay, the performance task for English Language Arts is going to be used for more than one purpose. It's called a multi-disciplinary performance task. And I know this is the simplest way we could convey the information to you. So you'll see it's grades three through eight, and then the possible writing type, so it would be narrative, informative, explanatory, opinion, that's what the codes are all for. So in grades three and four, where it says variety, that would be whatever's within the Language Arts standards. In grade five, because we'll be testing in the future, Science grade five, we're field testing some science prompts for the kids to write to. In grade six, we're using Social Studies prompts. And then at grade eight, Science and Social Studies prompts. So what you have then is, there's a rubric that we've had a group of people across Science, Language Arts, and History Government have come up with a rubric that can score the performance task, and the score can be used for both subjects. So the students in those grades, when they're taking History Government or Science, the performance task will count for English Language Arts and the other content, so they'll only be writing one time. That's just for the ELA performance task. And then the History Government performance task will stay at grade 11. And we're able to do that because those prompts have already all been written, and they're going through the item review process right now. So the performance task scoring, the performance tasks are delivered on the computer, the students write at the computer, but they have to be hand-scored. So we don't have the artificial intelligence yet to score written items that way. So the CET will be coordinating all of the scoring for us. We'll be using a distributed scoring model, and all the scoring will happen online. So teachers at districts, and we'll figure out how many teachers that each district needs to contribute to the scoring pool. And teachers will go online, do the training, and then the way the model's set up right now is that initially, after a teacher passes the training for scoring a performance task, then they will grade, and I'm just using a number right now because we don't know, but approximately 25 performance tasks from some other district, and they won't know where they're from. After that's scored, then they'll grade the same number of their own students. Now, it may be their own personal students, or it may be their own students within the building, but then they'll grade their own. So every performance task will get scored two times. So it's a lot of scoring. So we're working on developing a timeline in the process and everything for that right So a couple of days you need to keep on your calendar in case you want to come and observe or join us. November 19th, we're going to be meeting to develop the narrative performance level descriptors. So if you remember the chart that Dr. Smith showed you earlier today, where we have four levels instead of the five, each one of those four levels, right now, they're just called 1, 2, 3, 4. And there's nothing that says what a 1 means or what a 4 means. So that's the first step after we have an assessment, is to come up with the performance level descriptors. And so we'll be meeting on the 19th. We'll have at least two content experts per grade, per subject. They need to be very familiar with the standards, and they'll come together at KU, and then we'll work on developing those. Once the performance level descriptors are written, then we'll give the assessment. And when we get the assessment scored, then we'll have to go through the standard setting to say, when we look at how students performed and how that fits with the performance level descriptor, and then assign a score. So, I mean, we have no idea right now. That's why it's hard to give information back to districts before all this information is that we have it. Because if you told someone, well, you got 70 right, you don't know what the 70 means. You don't know if that's a level 1, 2, 3, or 4. I mean, so we have to put the scores then with the descriptors to do all of that. So we'll do that the week of July 20th. So after the committees meet and come up with their recommendation, then we'll be bringing the standard setting, the recommended cut scores to you. But until then, we don't, you know, we don't know what the expectation would be.
I see Kathy Bush had a question. Kathy, do you, is this a question you'd like to ask before she's finished? Okay, go ahead then.
Okay. We're also giving the alternate assessment. In previous years, under NCLB, we referred to the alternate assessment as the 1 percent assessment, and then we also had a modified assessment for students. We do not have a modified assessment any longer, so all students will be taking the general assessment, except for the severe and cognitively disabled students. And at this point, there isn't any strict parameter around 1 percent, but we would still expect it to be about 1 percent of the population. So we've been in the Dynamic Learning Map Consortium. They're developing a test. They have a test for ELA in Math. It's a through-course test, so the students will take testing at three different times during the year. And the standard setting for cut scores will be this summer on that, too. DLM is also developing a Science assessment, and we're participating in that. We expect to give a pilot during the same testing window on Science. And then we're developing our own History Government alternate assessment with KU. And the other assessment you need to know about is the one for English Language learners. In the past, we used what was called the CALPA. The CALPA went away because we couldn't deliver it through KITE. And so on this interim year, and ALPA 21 isn't ready, so we're giving the CALPA-P, which is a paper pencil assessment. And our team will be managing and reporting all the data for that. So that's a big undertaking for this one year, to get us through the transition period. And then next year, we'll be using ALPA 21. The field test for ALPA 21 will be going on, and we're recruiting volunteers. So if a school volunteers for ALPA 21, they also have to give the CALPA-P. And the ALPA 21 field test, they'll want to test, when a district would volunteer, they would need to test all different types of students within the district, because they would need some who have always, that English is their native language, and then other students that English wouldn't be their native language. So you can get a good measure on the assessment items. And the last thing I wanted to talk to you about is the Break Kite Day. It's scheduled for October 28th, and this is voluntary, but we're encouraging all districts to participate. The purpose of Break Kite Day is not for kids to get on and see what the test looks like. And that's an added benefit, but the purpose is for districts and buildings to check their systems, to make sure that they have the bandwidth to deliver the assessment. And one of the unique things about Break Kite Day is that all students will be coded for text-to-speech. And what CETE is encouraging is that everyone go on and have the students listen to the directions or use the text-to-speech item, because that draws the most bandwidth. And if there's problems, then they have a help desk set up, and we'll be able to help people before the testing window opens. So that's all I had.
Now, Kathy Bush, we're ready for your question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the testing windows, so every year, the schools will give ELA in Math and Science and History Gov., except History Gov.'s not, it's only given in designated grades. So the kids won't take History Gov. every year.
Right. History Gov. is every other year assessment. So it just happens that we're field testing it this year, and we're asking all students to participate. And then next year will be the year that actually counts for the assessment score for History.
So it will go back to?
Every other year after that, then.
One year they'll give Science, the next year they'll give?
No, we give Science every year.
Science every year.
And we give History Government every other year.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Ken Wellard.
On Break Kite Day, is there any possibility or capability of students or teachers or anyone to copy and hold what the test looks like?
Well, the items will be very similar to what's already out there for the practice test. So they will be released items.
There's no?
There's no security. There isn't, right, there isn't a security issue on Break Kite Day.
All right. Thank you.
Sally Cobble.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My question was on Break Kite Day. And do we know when that day is?
October 28th. So there's a handout.
Oh.
That has, that you can copy, share however you want.
Okay.
That has all, should have all your answers.
I'm sorry, I didn't read the handout yet.
That's okay. It's extensive. It's really probably more for buildings and districts to use, because to code everyone, to have text-to-speech requires some work on CETE's part, too. So it's just some pretty specific instructions on what the districts need to do with the personal needs profile of students.
Jim McNeese.
Break Kite Day.
Yes.
I'm a principal. How are you expecting me to organize this? Because there's only so many stations, there's only so many computers I have, and the kids are getting out of class to do this, and it's text-to-speech. God, I can understand the unanticipated and unexpected responses you're going to get.
So we're just asking that you try to simulate a normal testing day. So if you would normally run five classes through the computer lab to test, we would just ask that you, you know, make sure at some point during the day that all those computers are on at the same time. You don't have to do it for the whole day, but you need to, if you have three different computer labs with 20 computers in each lab, we would like to see you fill those up at some point during the day to make sure that everything's going to work, so you're putting your maximum load on your lines.
And after this meeting, will be the first time any of them are going to hear this or not?
Right, we have, we'll release it on the listserv then after this meeting.
And it's all voluntary?
It's all voluntary. If you're happy, if you're happy and you believe that you have everything you need to go on March 9th, then you don't need to do it. It's just, I mean, we know that there are districts out there that have questions.
I've gotten some blank stares from people when I talk about this in front of teacher groups and administrators. I was wondering why they hadn't heard anything.
Right, we really haven't released any information yet.
Okay. Should be very interesting.
It should be.
Should be.
It should be.
Can't wait to see how you raise a level of concern for our group of kids going in for 125 computers, sitting there and giving you text-to-speech responses. That'll be good.
The only other thing I would add is that?
Thank you.
Is that, from an IT perspective at the local district, they typically have to register individual students for specific tests, but in this case, it's all blank, what we call T E S T records. So it's just a large batch uploads, a punch of a button, and it'll create a roster for the kids, but the districts don't have to fuss around registering individual kids for individual tests. And the coding for text-to-speech will all be done at KU, and then after Break Kite Day is over, KU will wipe the slate clean and say, basically, the test is over, and then schools can basically do what they would normally do on their own timeline. So that wouldn't change the district level. The only new thing for them, if they do want to participate, again, it's voluntary, is just that big batch upload of all the kids with just a blank test record for everybody, registering everybody. So that's.
Oh, I'm just trying to.
Hope that makes it easy.
When we bring students into a testing center, you know, there's certain expectations, and we've developed certain behavioral expectations. And to just bring them in and say, have fun with this, is going to be a little different.
The other thing I would, I would agree, and the other thing I would draw your attention to that is a little clunky, in my opinion, there's a phrase in the, that says there's, I think, if I recall, it says there's no instructional value to these.
How do you take them seriously?
Yeah. What we intend by that is there's no scores, there's no, you know, the purposes for testing the system.
You know, you might get a real thrill with the kids trying to break the system. You know, that could be fun.
They're our best testers in many cases.
Sure. They'll put pressure on you, but they could put other pressures. It's just the unintended consequences of opening Pandora's box here that concern me.
We're hoping. It won't work out any of it. Right, but we have until March 9th to correct it all.
And Deana Horst has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I noticed that on your schedule for testing, you talk about Science and History and Government being given at the 11th grade level, when we've been talking about not testing students past sophomore year.
Right, there are two, okay, so there are two issues. The 10th grade for the federal accountability assessment is for English Language Arts and Math.
Okay, that's what I thought you were going to tell me.
Science, there isn't a, Science is still the old test, and Science has always been given at 11th grade. And it would be inappropriate to give that assessment to 10th graders. So as long as we're giving the old assessment, there can't be any change. Now, as the Science assessment gets developed, that would be a conversation for people to have at what grade. The History Government assessment had previously been a 12th grade assessment, and because of the multi-disciplinary task, performance task, writing, it was decided to move that to 11th grade, so that the kids would only have to write once, but then we moved that to 10th grade. So History Government and Science for this year, that, we just really were too far into the assessment development and everything. It couldn't be changed, so.
Okay. I just wanted clarification for the rationale.
Right. The History Government assessment is a state assessment. It has nothing to do with federal accountability. Just so everyone is on the same page with that.
John Bacon.
Thank you. Break Kite Day, I guess. My question has to do with the results of that activity. You know, it's going to be impossible to try to replicate all the variables out there when you're dealing with the web. So we need to have a Plan B ready to go, in my view. So I don't know if that means that we take the test locally and then all the data is transferred in one batch.
So that, that has happened from last, since last year, that has happened. They have brought back the local caching option, so districts can.
That needs to be ready to go, because even if, you know, Break Kite Day could go wonderful, it may flop, who knows? But still, I mean, it's going to be impossible, in my view, to make certainty that the web will work the same in March as it did on October 29th.
And that's one of the upgrades that CETE provided us over the summer.
Yeah.
There is a, there's a document that is probably, by the end of this week, I suspect it will be finalized, and it's the official statement from KU on the steps taken to improve the system from the DDOS attack last year, what they're doing going forward, what they did last year. It's basically one that we'll probably submit to, although they haven't asked for it, the U.S. Department of Education will make it available to the field, just basically a public statement on what we're doing to prevent this kind of thing, without leaking any trade secrets with regard to how to prevent that. This just might be something you'd be, doesn't address the Plan B.
It could be something else. We don't know what it is, because there's always something new. So, and this should be built into the contract, because we can't, year after year, have issues with this and keep doing the same thing and expecting a different result, I think. So it should be built in the contract that we have a Plan B, and so these school districts don't have, and the students don't have to go through this last year, something similar to this, what happened this last year, in my view. So I don't know, I may just be one-tenth, but I am, I am thinking we need to have a Plan B ready to go, and so we're not.
I'm keeping a list of contract, things, changes, ideas, improvements, whatever, so I'll add it to the list.
And, you know, if, and if they can't do it, I mean, we need to talk to another, somebody else to do the contract if they can't provide that. Not, you know, I was a big advocate for going with CET, and I still am, but, you know, we can't have what happened this last year happen again and again. So we've got to make sure we have, build safes into the system somewhere.
One thing we can do immediately, in the past, we had a very different way of equating forms in the old test, very, very different way of doing things. But what we would have is essentially, so for a 4th grade math test. is, is essentially, so for a fourth grade math test, we would have five equated forms for that fourth grade math, math, mathematics test. They were built at the very beginning of that testing system, and they were basically used for 10 years. And we would never have any more than three of those forms in, in use at the same time. But we, what we contracted for was what we called a breach form. In other words, if some, some, uh, big security break happens, those tests are, you know, out in the public, we could retire them all and have a breach form to fall back on. That would never be released during that, and we can immediately talk to KU about having the equivalent of a breach form with the items that we're having developed that might actually be, we'd, we'd fall back to kind of like a paper pencil format. I don't, you know.
I don't think we have to do that, but I just think that not only just the breach form, but also a, an alternative delivery system, you know, with going with the cash system or whatever onsite, and then transferring the data as a batch, you know, every hour or just so it's not real time all the time, subject to all these attacks.
Are there other questions? Thank you very much. Now we're ready to receive recommendations for approval of innovative district applications. Jim, Deana, and Brad are going to share information with us on this item.
So you want me to start? Okay. As you can see from what's written in your packet, the coalition met in late August to conduct interviews with all of the districts, and then the applicants discussed with us answered questions. We also determined if there were any additional, if there was additional information we felt needed to be added, so we gave that opportunity to the district to add, change their application. And there were a couple of them which did that. Then in early Sep, early September, we had a discussion about, we actually held personal face-to-face interviews with those districts, and those districts were repres, that were represented were Hugaton, Santa Fe Trail, Blue Valley, and Kansas City. And we approved Blue Valley, Kansas City, and Hugaton, and gave Santa Fe another opportunity to, to continue to work with their application. And they chose to withdraw. Seaman also had chosen to withdraw prior to that process and to the interview, the personal interview process, and Sterling had withdrawn prior to that. We will be having those three districts appear before us next month unless we approve them today, which it's my understanding we can do. But we can have them come before us and answer questions if you would like for them to do so. And then after we as a board have approved these three to be a part of the Innovative School Coalition, then we will look at some of the questions and say, do those need to be reworded, changed, may be clarified? And then we will be reopening the application process, and then they will need to have those applications in, in by, I believe it's December 1st. So I will ask you if you have questions about any of, anything that I have said, and if you have questions about any of the applications, that you do have a copy of them in your, um, in, in your packet, and most of them are fairly lengthy, so reading it today real quickly, if you're a speed reader, you could do that perhaps, but it includes Santa Fe Trail's application as well.
Deana, my question was about your comment. This is listed on our agenda as a receive item.
Right.
And you said, well, we could go ahead and approve it today.
That's what Brad had indicated to me that.
Well, I.
That we could, but.
I, I think it's always so informative to be able to see and hear the people that developed these applications and just have the opportunity for, for us to get to know them a little bit, but is there a preference on your part?
My only comment earlier was, the board now has 90 days, and traditionally, the first time you see it, it is a receive, but there's nothing preventing you from taking action earlier than the 90 days.
And that's really all I, I guess I wasn't clear about it, but that's all that I was meaning that unless you were, you'd all read through them and thought, hey, yes, we need to include them right now. That would be the prerogative of, of the board, but they would be expecting to come before the board, I believe, next month.
Thank you. Ken Willard.
Deana, how, what is the process for other schools to come on board? Is it just a once-a-year deal, or can they come on if, I, I think you said Santa Fe Trail could come back with a modified.
Right.
Version in December. Would they be approved for second semester? Or how does it work?
They actually, it's a year, each year, there's a new group that could be approved to be added to the group that now we've recommended.
Okay.
Well, to McPherson and to Concordia. So at this point, we have the potential of having five.
Four.
And for that would be a part of the coalition until December, and then we actually have the potential of additional applications. And then we'll go through that process of, of listening to, going through each application to see if it, if it meets all the guidelines, and then, and those are statutory guidelines. And then we will go through the process of hearing from them again. It would be the same, same setting, only I believe it'd take place earlier in, in the year than it has.
So with the exception of Santa Fe, um, new applications could come on throughout the balance of the year, and they would be.
Yes.
Considered and approved for the next school year?
As, they just have to be in by December, and then we.
For the next school year?
For the next school year.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. I just was not clear on that, so thank you.
Yes.
Ken, I would anticipate that next spring, you know, we would be approving at the board level before us, you know, and ending the process so they could begin the next year. This one took, first time?
Yeah.
Bylaws, organization, getting things set up, so where we have it moving now, so, yeah. I, I have to tell you that one of the things that was really exciting about, you know, going through this process was listening to all the things that these school districts have done prior to coming before us. They are, um, the leadership, and leadership meaning the school board, superintendent, and the educators of that district taking on their responsibility and, and doing such a great job, and each one was very diverse. Kansas City and Blue Valley obviously are very different. They're addressing things differently, but their goals are basically the same. You know, their, their expected innovations are probably different and sometimes maybe similar at the surface, but not underneath. You know, it was really, it, it will, it will do the board well to hear what these districts have to say. Good things are happening in Kansas.
And the innovations are directed toward improving achievement. And I think that's, and toward improving the education of students for their future. And that's an exciting thing to see that, that they've been thinking about this and, and making specific plans about how they're going to achieve that particular, their goals. And that, I think that's what we're looking for, is a group of school districts that can model good instruction, um, good organization at their school district for the purpose of educating their students to a higher level than ever before.
Carolyn Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, in looking at our agenda, I realized with only 15 minutes, we were just going to receive this today, and we would not be voting on them. And for me personally, I had expected that at some point, each of the districts would bring so-and-so, as someone just said, that we could see them, listen to them, and get that excitement that these two have just said that they felt. And so that was the only thing I wanted to let you know, that I'm not, I really want to see the districts come and visit with us.
Thank you. Sally Cobble.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to echo what Carolyn said. I'd like to see these districts come before so we can catch the enthusiasm. I know that there are many out in my district that, you know, they don't do anything unless they think about the welfare of their children and where they're going, and I think all districts in the state of Kansas are doing that. I need to hear from these districts to hear that, you know, evidently, there's barriers out there that are keeping people from doing what they want to do. And I think it's our job to encourage and help remove barriers that keep people. And I don't think there, you all know that I, I find this innovative group just another layer of bureaucracy. So I, you know, that, that is kind of where I stand on this, but I truly want to know what barriers are out there that are keeping. In our new plan and where we're going and what we were talking about, are we removing some of these barriers that everybody doesn't have to jump through another hoop to be an innovative district? We've got lots of districts out there that are role models and show good, good instruction. And I, I think what, the good that can come out of this innovative district is we hear what those barriers are and help people get through those. And so I personally would like to hear, Madam Chairman, the, the committees.
And I appreciate that fact as well.
So are there other questions or comments? Well, thank you all for the work you've put into getting this project off the ground and, and all the time devoted to it. We appreciate the work you do. Our next item is information on the Emergency Safety Intervention Report from the Special Ed Advisory Council, C I A C. And we have Colleen Riley and Jana Rosborough to.
Yes.
Talk to us.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. Jana and Laura will be providing the update for the council today. We have a few displays, getting this all put together.
Madam Chair, can I suggest a five-minute break?
I have mine scheduled for afternoon for 3:50.
I thought it would be a good time while they sit.
Yeah. Is it going to take you a whole minute?
No, just a minute. The server's best for you. Yes. Either way, I can start talking while they're setting up or. Well, good afternoon again. My name again is Jana Rosborough, and I'm with the Early Childhood Special Education and Title Services Team, and our director, Colleen Riley, and Laura Jurgensen is also here to present today. And really, the purpose of this agenda item is to give you an update on the C I A C meeting that occurred back on August 22nd. C I A C scheduled, had scheduled a special meeting to talk about an appeals process to the E S I, Emergency Safety Intervention Regulations, and really what we have for you today is a recap of that and to lead into where C I A C is and the next steps in consideration of a, of an appeals process for the E S I regulations. So the, I'll start with this first, though. The, the C I A C meeting on August 22nd, although it was a special meeting of C I A C, took the exact same form as all meetings of C I A C do. Started out with public comment, and many of the same speakers that you heard today with public comment were present and did provide a comment during that meeting. So C I A C heard from a wide variety of folks concerning E S I, the appeal process, how it's working, how it's not working, training opportunities that were going on, and just on a wide variety of subjects to kind of set some context again for the Emergency Safety Intervention Regulations. And always good to hear, always good to bring that information back, and it set a nice framework to lead into these important discussions by C I A C. Then Laura and I had the opportunity to provide an update, and much of what we did during that update was some, very similar to what we provided to you last board meeting. All the activities that have taken place in support of the E S I regulations and implementation of the regulations throughout the past year, all the work that had been done, and our ongoing efforts, the Epic Group, as we call it, that meets on a regular basis to discuss E S I, things that we're seeing, the E S I data, and where we can make decisions on providing technical assistance and additional guidance to the field. We also then realized and, and through conversations and both here and these presentations and and to C I A C, that sometimes when we step away from the E S I regulations, we lose a little bit of what's in the E S I regulations themselves, and probably that's a fault of ours because we are too close to it. So sometimes we, we don't see it or forget to bring everybody back. So after we gave our update on all the activities that we were doing in support of the E S I regulations, we decided it was a good time to create a visual and, and really talk about what the E S I regulations contain in it, and then to bring that next bridge of a conversation to where the appeals process would start, to really. would start, to really frame for CAC where they were discussing this next step to be. And so we go to this visual, which is on this one over here. And so these are the ESI regulations that you passed back in April of 2013. The ESI regulations require that each local board of education have an ESI policy, and there's things that must be included in that, including personnel training on the prevention, de-escalation, prevention, their parent education, in terms of the parents have to be aware that there are these ESI regulations being available in student handbook, code of conduct, and also available on the website. And there has to be an ESI data review at both the building and the district level. And the building review and district review is required at least biannually. And then if it gets to the point that an ESI is used with the student, what has to happen then? Three things that have to happen as required within the regulations is that there's written parent notification, that has to happen within two school days, documentation of the incident, and that is spelled out on what schools must document if an ESI is used with a student, and then reporting to KSDE. Then this is where we start to talk about the pieces that are available both at all times and available at the point in time that a parent and school disagree about the implementation of the local board policy. What if they believe, for instance, that seclusion or restraint was used with their student in a non-emergency situation? The student was not in immediate danger of harming him or, him or herself or others? There's two places in this kind of bridges off. We have on the green, parent remedies. And these are available at any point in time. And although I put them here in the chart, you could really put them all the way back up at the red piece and have another arrow go down there, because these are available throughout the whole process. Parent remedies, parents can contact the Office of Civil Rights, the IDEA, if applicable, if the student is a student with disability, the police, courts, Department of Children and Families if they believe abuse occurred. But also housed within the ESI regulations themselves is a local dispute resolution piece. The parent can bring a complaint to the local board of education and file it with them, if you will, it's a written one. And then the local board is required to do an investigation of that incident and make a determination of fact. And then has to provide written findings of fact to the parent and to KSDE within 30 days of that investigation. So when we start talking about the appeal process, it really starts with this local board decision is where the appeals process would begin. This piece is all included within the ESI regulations themselves, so this is, this is the ESI regulations in a flowchart form. So we set this up to talk through CAC of where really we would, we would start this conversation, knowing that these things are in place, this is what this looks like, what then next? What if there's an agreement, disagreement about what the local board's decision is? It's coming to this next piece. And so these are two things that really rose to the top as CAC had this conversation. But I'll say, when we get to these two pieces right here, a lot of the conversation that was, that was had by CAC was driven by two key points. A, they were worried about authority. What is, what is the relationship between the state board of education and the local board of education? How does that work? Because if we come back to here and where we start this discussion, we really start down at the bottom of this. And then they were also, had questions about data. And they made requests for some data from us, which we have provided to CAC throughout the time. We provide, at every CAC meeting, an ESI update, where we do discuss data, what we know about ESI, the things that we're doing. Requested data from KC, which Terry Collins has presented. And then they also requested data from the Disability Rights Center. And I think you heard today from Catherine Johnson, some concerns she had about bringing that data forward and, and presenting it, but was able to give some scenarios of calls that they have gotten. But, but CAC was really, on those two issues was really where they were having most of their discussion and it kind of framed it in terms of coming to something to be able to bring back a recommendation for you today at this meeting. And so with the questions about the authority, kind of putting the, the data piece on hold, they asked for some guidance. And Scott Gordon, our general counsel, great, you know, graciously came and spoke to CAC and answered some of their questions about how exactly does this look? How exactly would this work? And really, these are where these kind of two pieces get to, of where CAC kind of, kind of jumped onto or latched onto two pieces that could be key in their discussion. Does the district have a local policy? Could that be reviewed? And what if the district does not follow the established local policy? Included within that is the individual mistreatment of a child and the response of a local district. But that again goes back into being noncompliant with the established local policy. So that is sort of where CAC left it at this point in time. And, and this is where we anticipate that their conversation will begin next time. I do not have a recommendation for you today from CAC. They meet on Thursday. And they did charge themselves with, with having a recommendation to bring back to you next month's meeting. So that the timing for the September didn't work out so well and being able to fit another CAC meeting in between the last one on August 22 and today. But they have taken back all the questions and comments and concerns and are, are talking to other stakeholders and intend to come back prepared to make a recommendation on this Thursday. I should also say on the two pieces that we asked you about last time, in terms of what should we bring to CAC, in terms of having considerations or things to think about, one was parents. And I, and throughout this, you know, CAC does a wonderful job of always thinking about parents. And we spent a lot of time talking about the parent remedies and really working through the pieces up here of what exactly can a parent do within the ESI regulations themselves and throughout the whole entire time. And then what would that look like in an appeals process as well? But CAC does an excellent job of focusing on the families and, and really looking at that. And the second piece was on the kind of the sanctions. Well, what would happen if an appeal was heard? Where would it go? How exactly then would it be remedied at the local level if, and a local board decision was overturned in terms of the investigation into an incident of ESI? And we did not really get to that because the discussion was still ongoing about what should an appeals process look like? Should there be one? Should there not be one? What exactly the recommendations were going to shake out from CAC? So again, no recommendations today. These are some key points that they, they did take away and, and were looking at as we wrapped up the conversation. But I know that that is not a guarantee of exactly where they'll go with the recommendation. Also, kind of those options ones and option two that we've talked about previously are not, not off the table. But these are really two points that they latched on to at the end of the last conversation. And again, meet on Thursday and, in this room, and it is open to the public.
Jana, I thought that the regulations require districts to have local policy.
It does. Absolutely. They, it requires the, the local boards of education to adopt a policy for their district. So it has to be approved by the local board of education, but they are district policies.
So I'm perplexed by number one, district does not have a local policy. So the question is, what action would be taken if a district does not have a local policy? That's kind of the issue, I guess.
In, in terms of an appealable issue. So I, it would have to probably stem for some, from some sort of violation of the district's ESI policy. And not having a policy in itself is a violation of the ESI regulations.
Yeah.
And so then how we go back there and remedy that would be, would be the question.
Okay, thank you. Carolyn Campbell.
Thank you. Well, I guess I sort of started this appeals concern in, was it February or March of 2013, because I had a situation in one of my districts that called. And was, it's a long story and we don't need to get into all that. But that's when I thought how simple it would be to have a process where, when the parent wasn't happy with what happened at the local level, at the local district, then that it would be someone here that could at least review what had been determined and then get back. I just didn't understand how complicated this would all end up being for the situation. Now, I gotta come forward a little bit. Couple of months ago, I had, have had a parent call me with a concern. She was in one of my districts. She's now taken her child out of that district and went to another one. She told, she did tell me that when she called here and visited, she was advised it was a local decision, the district. So then I called, called the district and visited with them, and they were very, they have been working very hard. Today, it was very interesting to me with Ms. Locust, when she said she brought in the local control, you know, and I thought, well, yes, we all know it's, we're a local controlled state, and I appreciate that. But for us, the state board, I thought we were concerned about all the children across the state. And, and of course, and you know, you and I, we've, we've visited about this, you know, we only had one, one to come. And of course, my thought is, one, if one, there's, there's more out there that they just, parents just don't know what to do or how to get to us, being frustrated. So I'm still, and I, I listened intently to, like, Mr. Collins this morning, because I, because, and Dr. Matthews, because there was these folks that I really do respect, you know, and CAC, I respect, you know, the organization. I talked to Vicky Bosler, because I'd known her from Holton. And, but my concern now in all this is, are the state regulations clear? And I was, and I'll have to admit that I was told that Mr. Gordon came to CAC and visited regarding, is, is there some problems that maybe we need to go back and, and revise our regulations to make it more clear? Because with the policy that every district is supposed to have, does a copy come to us or something for us to review? You know, what you're saying here, a district does not have a local policy. Do, do we not get some information or do we, do we really care?
In terms of, does a copy come to us? It does not come to us. We have been told, if the majority of districts have adopted a model policy that was drafted by the Kansas Association of School Boards, can we guarantee that every district across the state of Kansas currently has an ESI, a policy in place? I can't tell you that I know that for sure right now. We do have one of our projects that is working on it and looking through and double checking to make sure that all districts across Kansas have this in place. And in terms of, of do the regulations need to be changed or not at this point in time? I am, they have been in effect for one school year. So we are in, in, right into the second school year. And I think we'd absolutely agree with you that one complaint that we know of is not, is not great data that we have. But we are working hard with our partners to, to strengthen how we can communicate better to families about the ESI regulations themselves and what is contained within those regulations to hopefully make more folks aware and schools better equipped to have some of those tough decisions, tough conversations.
Well, and does it need to be clear, you know, like, do we know that our, our staffs across the districts, have they received the training that they need? Is it clear that they're supposed to get training? You know, and there's just several, you know, things that I, I have even more questions now about the regulations and, and if, if we should start again with, with maybe getting them, try to get them revised to make this clear.
Thank you for your questions, Carolyn. I think that, as Jana mentioned, we are in the first year of implementation of these regulations. We have had numerous districts access the technical assistance that's been available. So one of the pieces of data that we have is the amount of training that our staff has provided, some of which has been provided to you at these meetings. We, we have conducted numerous trainings to make districts aware of their responsibility. What we have not done is gone in and done a deep monitoring of policies, practices, and procedures. Some of that comes about as you're implementing and as questions arise. Where we are right now, though, is at the piece of the regulations that were, when it was, when these regulations were passed, there were some board members that specifically asked for another set of, or an amendment to the regulations for an appeals process for parents. We have specifically taken care of the concerns for students. We've got positive behavior supports, training all across the state in place for, for educators to be able to provide the appropriate supports for students. But what we now need is this discussion about the appeals process for parents. And that's what we've been trying to address the last couple of months.
Okay, I don't want to monopolize. I see there's other folks who want to talk, but I might come back.
Ken Wellard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. May I ask what an appealable issue would look like under current regs?
Under the current regulations without an appeal process?
Yes.
And, oh, so anytime a parent and a school disagrees, a use of an ESI with student, then they can submit a written complaint to the local board of education. So it would be anything covered under the Emergency Safety Interventions Regulations that they could submit a written complaint to the local board.
What if the nature of the complaint did not fit within those parameters?
I'm trying, I'm trying to think of a situation that it wouldn't fit.
Can we see those, those parameters on that document over there, that board?
Sure. And, and this is for an appeal process. So if I, I'm, I guess if we got to the point that a, a district did not have a local policy, that it would come and, it would come in front of, that would probably be the harder one. And we would probably have to get involved earlier on that in terms of a parent notifying us that a district did not have a local policy in place for the ESI regulations. The second one, I think, is, is covered within the ESI regulations themselves. It would just be that first one with the district not having a local policy.
So we don't know what the district policies are. And so if their policy allowed for the, the incident that took place, that a parent is wanting to complain about, then the, and the parent would have no, no, no basis for an appeal or complaint?
The, the local policy still has to be within the parameters of the ESI regulations. So it could be more restrictive, but it can't be less restrictive. So it has to at least match what is in the ESI regulations themselves. And that includes definitions of when seclusion and restraint can be used with a student, only in an emergency situation where a student's in immediate danger of harm, harming him or herself or others. And, and those pieces, the prohibitions on prone and supine, all of those things have to be within the local policy. Again, locals can go more restrictive, but they can't go less restrictive than the ESI regulations.
And I believe Scott Gordon had a comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ken, if I may answer your question, and I think Carolyn, I'll be answering your question also. To summarize kind of what I had explained at the CAC meeting, my, just my belief reading the regulations and reading some of the potential appeals that had been proposed for CAC and the board to consider. The two items that you have in front of you, or at least on this particular slide, I believe, came as a result of that conversation. The regulation specifically requires the, the local school board to adopt regu, or adopt their policies in compliance with certain requirements. That's what the regulation calls for. The regulation does not keep a teacher, it does not say teachers are not allowed to use arm bars or throw a student in a room for four hours under seclusion. The regulation says the local school district must adopt a policy to prevent that from happening. So what I submitted to CAC was, based on the language they had seen so far, if a parent were to appeal a violation of the regulation, and if, as a hearing officer, that appeal came to me, the only thing that I could find, the only way that I could find that a board had violated the regulation as it exists, is either they did not have a local policy at all, that would be a violation of the regulation. If they actually had a policy, but they weren't enforcing it, they said it's just a shadow policy that really means nothing, they could, in theory, be found in violation of the regulation. And the way that you demonstrate those is if there was an individual student- And the way that you demonstrate those is if there was an individual student that had been harmed or had been treated in a way that violates the intent of the regulation, the parents of that student, or if they're not a minor student, they raise the complaint with the local school board saying, my child was injured or my child was mistreated. You, your policy doesn't meet the regulation, or at least you're not following your own policy. Local board makes their decision, whatever that case may be. Well, maybe it turns out that the local board actually makes the decision. Yeah, in that circumstance, your child, the student that was placed in the headlock, that shouldn't have happened. Okay? So I would, and the the local board makes an appropriate action based on that. Done. There's no reason for the state board to be involved. That process is already required by the regulation. But if it turns out that the parents were potentially not happy with whatever decision that the local board came up with, maybe the parents would want to appeal to the state board, assuming that you adopt some policy to do that. And if it turns out that the local school board does have a policy and that they are enforcing that policy, yes, in one particular instance, there may have been a child that was mistreated or the treatment of that child did not follow that individual school board's policy, then there's no violation of the regulation. Again, that was just my kind of gut reading of all of the drafts that you have seen so far of what an appeal would be. So when you ask the question, what is an appealable issue? We don't know. We haven't given you the appeal yet. We're kind of putting the cart before the horse, if you will. But those are some of the considerations that I shared with CAC that I wanted them to take in mind whenever they were developing or making a recommendation for an appeal.
So Scott, it seems to me that the way the regulation is currently worded, that there really is no, I I mean, everything stops at the local school board.
That's the way, just about everything happens, is it stops at the local school board.
So so our desire to have an appeals process does not fit with the current regulation?
No, there is no appeal process yet in the regulation. That doesn't mean you can't adopt an appeal process.
Okay.
You you can add that, that would be the next regulation.
Well, that's, okay, I thought that's where we were last month, that we, that's what we were asking for advice from CAC. Not that they needed to grab, gather more data or anything like that, but that they were going to give us some input on to drafting this piece of, this this appeals process. It seems like we're still back where we were then. And we've been told today by s- some of the opponents of this appeals process that it's not, in their view, even necessary or appropriate or constitutional. So that that's where I guess I need, I need your advice. Are we, are we on firm constitutional ground to ask for and write an appeals process attached to this reg with some remedies attached to it?
Can you write an appeal process in the regulation? Yes, I feel comfortable telling you that.
Okay.
Whether or whatever you choose as your appeal process is legal, that's a conversation between you and your attorney that's probably not going to happen in an open meeting. Because he would be giving you legal advice, just like I've had, I've given, I've had conversations with my client. What I can tell you is I have no intent of letting, of staff or KSTE suggesting anything that I think violates the law. And I I think Mark would advise you probably the same way of being very careful what you would adopt to make sure, that is a very important question.
So in your view, should we just, as board members, draft our own appeals process and approve that without going to the department for assistance or input on that, past what we already have?
You you charge the department with doing certain tasks for you. So I would suggest allowing us, I'll put it this way, you're going to have a recommendation for an appeal in October. Period. We will get input from CAC. We will absolutely get their feedback, along with all of the other clients that we deal with. You will have a recommendation, whether you want to adopt it or not. And that's a, that's going to be a conversation that the board will have come October, November, however long it takes you to adopt it. You will have a recommendation for an appeal process come October. Sorry, Brad.
I think the biggest challenge CAC is having right now is this same discussion. What do we mean by appeal? Is it appealing a local board's decision? Is it appealing the process the school district went through? And that, and that's what the discussion at last CAC meeting was getting a good handle on. If the parent wanted to appeal to this agency, what types of things would they appeal? And then what could this agency then do? And that's when they'll come back Thursday after having that conversation, is then drafting a recommendation to bring to you.
Okay, well, I don't, I don't want to monopolize this discussion. I have one more comment to make. I thought it was, it was very clear in my mind, at least, and maybe I'm the only one, that what we were looking for was in a, a process for appealing a local board decision. May I, was CAC told that's what we wanted, or am I wrong about that's what we asked for?
No, CAC was told that, but we've got over 20 people that are members of CAC. They represent parents, they represent other state agencies, and they represent school districts. They, like you, hear information and want an opportunity to digest the information. CAC has in the past come to you with a recommendation, and they will next month come to a recommendation. But they didn't want to make a decision without thought. And and I understand your sense of urgency, but I also want to give credit to the stakeholder process. There are more than one stakeholder groups that are interested in an appeals process, some for and some not. And there are also more than one group that is interested in the details of an appeals process and what those sanctions would be. And so I really feel strongly that CAC has taken thoughtful consideration to your request as a board. They haven't dismissed it, and they haven't put it off. They've, they've had other considerations to discuss at the same time, but they will be coming to you with a recommendation for October. I I'm sorry that it isn't any sooner, but we are trying to allow the stakeholder process to be very open and very public and transparent. I also want to remind you, and Carolyn, you had a great question about local board policy. You had a public comment this morning from Paul Faber from Harts Springs, who came to you to talk to you about the school policy that they have put into place in order to meet the regulations. If you recall, this was a residential setting that came to you and also came to CAC asking to be waived from the regulations. They are now coming forward and saying, we now have a policy in place. We've worked with the team, and we are, we are making a good faith effort to implement those regulations. These things don't come easily. CAC is doing the very best that they can, and we understand the pressure that you're under as well.
And I I believe we have several other questions, but my comment is, I think Ken was right when he said, well, maybe his understanding of what we desired is not the same. And I think as every board member may have a little different understanding of what that request was about and what it meant. So we'll proceed forward with our questions. Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to go on record, I favor an appeals process that would be simple, declarative, and principled. I really like those words. Every time I have a conversation with a legislator, I try to tell them, you know, keep writing laws. You're doing a fine job, but keep it simple, principled, and declarative. And I think those are good watchwords for what we're going to do or have a recommendation for in October. I I just want to make one quick comment about the perspective that our parents need to know something about the law. I would be very cautious about emphasizing that. Because when you say things like that, I think of a gentleman named, you know, Miguel, who's a laborer and three school age kids, and one in diapers and one on the way, and maybe his wife has limited English, and he's doing the best he can. And our parents need to know the law. If I were you, I'd back off on that. Thank you very much.
Jim McNeese.
This is a very touchy subject, obviously, and a lot of opinions. And I do agree with the fact that we might not all, we're all saying appeal in some way, but we might not all be in the same position on what an appeal is. To define my sense of an appeal, it would be basically the local board made a decision that, hey, it's policy, everybody did everything right, no harm, obviously no foul. But then the parent says, as one of the issues that was brought to us today, that the naming of a room, it's a safe room as opposed to a secluded room. Intent is basically to isolate. We're not secluding anyone, we're just isolating. And the board agrees with the local administration, and everybody's, you know, that, we're just going to do it. We're going to call it a safe room. That obviously was not the intent. You know, I don't want to sit here, because I can come up with about five or six more scenarios that would be appealable. And it, as I've said at other meetings, my goal with the appeal is that it is solved at the local level. But sometimes it it isn't. And that someone comes in from the outside and says, no, guys, this is not the way it is, or yes, it is, to the parent. Then the parent has other remedies. My goal is to keep it out of those other remedies as long as I can in terms of meeting the needs, because sometimes those other remedies come to the same conclusion, but cost a lot more money and heartache. The most important thing to keep in mind in all of this certainly is, is that we're talking about the potential mistreatment of a child. You know, and I'm kind of distressed at, quite frankly confused, not distressed, at the, the number of people who came up and talked about not wanting an appeal who live within the appeal process. I live within the appeal process. You know, I just, you know, there's always somebody above me. You know, and not to, and and to say we don't want an appeal process because we really haven't had any problems. That didn't make sense to me. When we live, you and I live in an appeal process, an appeal world. You know, it just didn't, you know, what I want is an appeal process, much like was just stated by Mr. Roberts, that it is clear to people and declarative, if we're on the same word, you know, but makes sense, simple to do, you know, and bringing someone from the outside, as I said before, could be formal or informal. You know, in some process. I don't want an elaborate, you know, process, I don't want to appeal. There are some things that, quite frankly, Colleen, you could probably deal with right on your own desk. It's the district doing it. And if a district isn't, doesn't have a local policy, okay, they got bigger issues than, they, obviously not bigger than the the care of a child, but they have bigger issues in management, you know, going on. Because I have not come across a district yet or a superintendent that hasn't talked to me about this. I mean, I just can't, I'd be shocked. That would be, you know, quite frankly, dereliction of duty not to have this completed. You know, I mean, we, if you're sitting out there right now and you don't have one, get one now. Because that's where we are, you know. And I have been really thrilled, quite frankly, going into districts and hearing of the good things that have happened from this policy, as you have related as well. It's been bigger than just, you know, special education and bigger than just, you know, it's changed, especially with MTSS. It's just fit in so well, because we're talking about the end product of the appeal. But we have, we don't have as many conversations and should about the preventative and 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 trainable opportunities that we have for staff that have really been good. You know, I was at the MTSS, you know, conference, you know, and and it was, it was really good. The conversations were great. You know, it has really changed our schools. And I I think we're fighting over like this much of a huge policy, you know, that has really had tremendous impact in a very short time. And though it was last year at this time, I was hearing a lot of gripes, I'm not hearing anything now. It's really, you know, it's, it's not the bad thing that they thought it was going to be, the ruinous example. It's worked, and it's worked well. And I think this board has taken a position that we want to see something besides, you know, just a a a end road at that local board. It doesn't mean us, because I'm not here, I don't want to start sitting and adjudicating local board decisions. I'm not for that. But I am for having some appeal process that would bring a dispute to resolution through mediation, force mediation. You know, somebody, some other area, some other district comes in, you know, and says, I looked at this as an outsider, and this is what I see. And that, here's my ruling on this, you know, you guys, you follow the policy, have a policy, did the right things, and guy, parent, you're not right. Now you can go to the other stuff. And if if it's the other way, and it says, you know, district, your policy was there. You people did a nice job, except it wasn't the right job. Fix it, you know. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sally Cobble.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Some of mine is what Jim said down there, but I want to go back to, back to the basics, I guess. Okay, KASB developed a policy. In that policy, I'm assuming it follows this flow chart. Okay, because I'm assuming you've looked at that policy and you've all agreed.
Yes.
Okay. Let's go down here then. When a parent has trouble, you know, they always go to the principal, or you always tell them whatever, you know. But now let's get down to fact finding. Something has happened, and there's fact finding. I don't have a clue who does that fact finding. I don't have a clue on when the fact finding is found with the local board and everything. Is there an outside agency that comes in and listens to the fact finding and makes a decision to where really that is the appeal process right there? Or, and if it's not, I'm, I think we could take a care of a lot of it right there if the outside source was 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 done at the local level. And if not by outside people, then if not, I guess I'm giving ideas on the appeal process. If not, I like it to go to something more like what we do with teacher licensure. I never get the name of that professional.
TPC. Practices.
Professional Practices Commission.
Something like that. I'm a little bit like John. I do not want this board to start becoming the Appeal Board. I I don't think that that's anywhere in our description. I don't think that's anywhere defined by the Constitution and statutory or anything. But I want the parents, because sometimes we know things go wrong. Nobody intends it, but they need to have someplace that an outside source can look at this and help make a decision. Now, that, that's what I would like to be somewhere in that appeal process, whether you put it at the local level and, because I know when we do teachers that you let go and, you know, the process comes back, they bring in a fact finder. And then they bring in somebody, and it either stops there, or that, then that's when it gets messy. You know, if we put it there, that, you know, that's okay with me. Usually, when I get a complaint, and I'm sure Carolyn did the same thing, have you talked to your local board? Have you talked to the department? Have you, and you know, sometimes the answer is yes, 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 but I'm not getting anywhere. I'm not getting anywhere needs to be taken care of. And sometimes there's nowhere for that person to not get anywhere. But we need to get this stopped somewhere that's fair to the student, fair to the parents, and fair to the school system. And I could see where that appeal process could happen right at the local board area. Or we develop something like the the committee, I can never remember. So that's my suggestion.
And and I, to elaborate just a little bit on that, the one complaint that we were aware of, that when a a written finding of fact was made in regards to an investigation that a parent disagreed with how that was implemented, that district did choose to hire someone outside to do the investigation. And that was their choice, that's not required in the ESI regulations. But the local board can do the investigation. But I, sometimes I I gather that maybe local boards do not want to do that investigation in all cases as well. And so they can appoint a designee. And and that one, they did hire outside folks to come in and do that investigation for them.
Deanna Horst.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I tend to agree with what Jim and Sally were just talking about. It seems to me that a hearing officer, if it gets to that point, should be more to, more of the focus instead of bringing it to this entire board, at least initially. I also have a concern about the district doesn't have a local policy. I think we should know that. We should already know that, whether they have a local policy or not. And whether you know what's in that policy is another picture, but the fact that they have one, they should be telling you that they have one that in content, that contains certain pieces of information that are in the regulations. And the personnel training, we should know, or you should know, that they indeed are doing that. It seems to me that, that reporting to KSDE should be, maybe, and maybe I'm reading this wrong, but the use of an ESI with a student, yes, maybe you have the reporting to the department at that point, but it seems to me you need to know that all three of those types of things have occurred prior to the use of an ESI with the, with the student as well. And perhaps there'd be even less of an issue. And it's sort of like Hardspring. They came here today to tell us that they had implemented a new policy and they had been training their personnel. So why would we not think that a local school district should also provide that information? If, if a private organization can do that, surely a public organization can as well. But I have some concerns, like I said, about making us the, the appeal board as such, at least from an initial point of view. I think it may be like the Professional Practices Commission where we look at the decision that's been made and if that's necessary for us to approve it, that's another picture. But I guess I'm curious why we haven't required districts to let us know that they've done those three top things.
We haven't made a formal effort on that, in that it's not in the regulations per se, the requirement that they report back to us. We do however, though, on a regular basis, with schools that we interact with, schools that our TASM providers interact with, look to see what their policies are on ESI and the training that they do. So it has been more informal, and I will say, I can't recall any district or our school that I've been concerned about not having an ESI policy. I can't say across the state that I know that all 286 have an ESI district policy in place, but that is something we are actively working towards. And, and not only having the policy adopted by the Local Board of Education as, as is required by the regulations, but also that it's available to parents, that it's available on the school website, the district website. And so these are things that we're working in conjunction with some of our partners to, to try to ascertain and get a better picture of it across the state of Kansas. In terms of personnel training, every school has to keep a record of who has been trained and what training that they have undertaken, so that is kept at the local level and we can request that at any time. And we have, throughout all of this, if there's ever a doubt or there's ever any concerns that we have at the State Department in terms of how the ESI regulations are being implemented, we can ask for all of that documentation at any time to also ascertain whether or not the policy's in place and are they complying with the aspects of the policy.
But that's triggered by a parent who may be issuing a complaint?
It could be triggered by several different things, not necessarily in maybe the formal sense of this, but a call, concern, voice to us, that we could ask for any of that documentation at any time. Also with the data we have, we're investigating a data drill down with those folks that are two standard deviations above the median. And we're doing a drill down to send out some technical assistance providers, and a piece of that is review of all of these things as well, to get out there and see, why are you so high? Are you missing one of these components that are required by the regulations? Are you, are you just not implementing well one of these components within the regulations? So spurred by a lot of different things, but we, we try to always ask on whatever circumstance brings us into a district about these, these things and components of the ESI regulations.
Thank you.
John Bacon.
Thank you. I was trying to think, you know, exactly what I want this appeal process to look like. And it, to me, it's a little bit like, if I have a policy in my household, if you do a bad thing, I'm going to beat you, okay? Well, you know, as long as everybody in the household likes me, I get by with that, until it gets another set of eyes on it and it says, "Well, you know, John, really you shouldn't beat your kids that way, because that's not the way other people do it." And so every, and that, and that's really how I think this will work. I mean, if, if a district is actually doing everything they're supposed to do, we're going to see that, because if we, if we force the district to do something that they don't believe they need to, or they're following the law, we're going to get sued right back. The district's going to say, "No, board, you're wrong, and we disagree with you," and we're not going to do that. So I think, in my view, the appeal process is a way to expose a behavior that needs to change. Or, in, in districts sometimes, you know, Janet's a good teacher and we like her, so whatever she decides to do in her classroom, we're going to overlook it, you know, because we, but maybe what Janet's doing is really, needs to have another set of eyes. And so how do we do that? And I think in most instances, it's just going to be another set of eyes looking at it and saying, you know, really, based on best practices, you probably shouldn't be doing that, that way anymore. And it's just, I think that's the way this will be successful.
Kathy Bush.
Just kind of to add my two cents kind of quickly, I kind of see number one here, does not have a local policy, or, go back to that other one, the flow chart. The personnel training, parent education, the review and the local board policy, that's kind of oversight. I don't see that as something that we should even mess with an appeal with, that should be part of KSDE oversight. Now, I realize it takes some time to get those things into place, I get that. But I do think that's an oversight issue. I kind of see number two as kind of where the appeal really, time should be spent as far as that particular place, as far as appeal is concerned. And, you know, yeah, as, as John said, then, you know, then folks know that, you know, we do expect them to handle this, we do expect them to cover this, and if there is something that comes up, then it needs to be dealt with. You know, overall, and back to what Jim said, you know, the compliance with what's going on and what has gone on in our schools and the conversations that teachers and administrators and school board members are having about positive behavior supports has been phenomenal, which has really kind of indirectly come from this, this set of regs. So I think the work that's been done has been very positive, and we're kind of getting one little piece that we need to take care of, which is the appeal process. And I think the board all feels strongly that we need some kind of a process to go through when there are issues that come up, because folks, you know, they do, they like that teacher, they like that building, that's their school, and so they don't want to appeal, but, you know, something going on there really isn't quite right. So it's kind of fits under number two, is where I see most of it. Number one, that type of thing really should kind of be an oversight issue rather than an appealable kind of issue. But I'm not an attorney, so I don't, I don't know if, sure.
Thank you for saying it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Jenna, were you at the end of your presentation, or did you have more to present to us? We kind of jumped in right there.
No, that is absolutely fine. And this is just, I mean, what I was going to end with, again, is just a reminder that CX meeting this Thursday in this room, and this is, you know, their intention to move forward with a recommendation stemming from the appeal of the local board policy. And we'll take back everything we've heard today and discuss it with them on Thursday. I'll be back with you next month.
Okay, thank you. Well, we are going to take our break now. We have a 15-minute break scheduled, and we will resume at 25 after 3:00. I believe most of our board members are present, so we will resume our meeting with a report, a licensed personnel report from Scott Myers and Susan Helbert. Thank you for allowing us a little break time here.
This afternoon, we're going to provide you a summary report of the licensed personnel for the 2013-14 school year. And in order to set you up for that a little bit background, the Educator Data Collection System, or EDCS, it's a web application that's designed to collect information about licensed personnel in accredited schools across the whole state of Kansas. And within this system, within EDCS, every year the district submit a licensed personnel report, or LPR for short, in which data is compiled, it's self-reported by the school districts, and it all relates to staff assignments for all the positions or assignments that should be filled by a licensed person. Who uses this data? In the aggregate form, the data is used by agency staff a lot of times. We look at trends. The school districts use the data. Much of it is used when we submit required reports to the federal government. Educational researchers, researchers a lot of time request this type of data. And then finally, the higher ed institutions are also very interested in the data from these systems. Lori Adams and Shane Carter are consultants on our team, and they're the ones that have the deep knowledge of both the systems and the data, and they provide training and countless hours of assistance to district personnel as they submit their licensed personnel report and enter data into EDCS. So they're going to give you summary data, starting with Shane.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Shane Carter, and this afternoon, I'm going to give you a brief explanation about the systems involved with collection of the data, and then I'm going to move into the actual, some of the demographic information. I'll be covering gender, entrance codes, ethnicity and race, and then a part of the age. And then once I'm complete, I'll be followed by Lori Adams, who will complete the rest of the report. All right, this first slide, I'd like to take a moment and introduce you to a couple of our systems that we use to collect this data. And two of our main systems are, listed on the left is the ELCS, which is the Educator Licenture Center System. And this is a system that we use daily to process applications and issue licenses to teachers. On the right is the Educator Data Collection System, or EDCS. That's the system that districts use to collect that assignment data and that demographic information. A couple of reports that are generated through EDCS, it's the Licensed Personnel Report, which we're covering now, and the Staff Assignment Report, also known as the SAR, or commonly referred to as the Kickout Report. And this report provides districts with information about teachers who may not be licensed appropriately for assignments, or may not have a license, or their license may expire, may have expired. The next slide, I know it's a very, very busy slide, but this just highlights some of the other systems that are used by the agency to collect various pieces of data. I would like to highlight one, that's the KCOSMS, which is the Kansas Course Codes Management System. As we move through this Licensed Personnel Report, there's going to be some assignment information that's discussed. And as far as collecting that information, districts must first map courses that are taught to their students in this Kansas Course Code Management System. And then once it's mapped, then it's available for selection in EDCS. So they can assign that specific course to that teacher that's teaching the student. And pending your questions on, on the systems, I'll go ahead and move into the Licensed Personnel piece.
Oh, Deana Horst. Thank you, Madam Chair. Does this system pick up, for example, if a school district is saying that a particular course counts for a certain credit that's required for graduation, does it pick up that that person is or is not licensed to provide that particular education for that credit?
Yes, ma'am, and we'll list that. So when a course is mapped in KCOSMS, one of the requirements is that they break out the credit. So once the district goes in and adds that assignment into EDCS for a particular teacher, that staff assignment report, after they submit the information, is going to detail if that individual holds the appropriate license to teach that specific course. Did I answer your question?
Well, for that course, but if they're, and I'll just give you an example, because I have a background in art education, and I serve on a, and on a board of art educators. And they have a great concern, because districts are saying, for example, a journalism teacher is teaching art because they have, they take pictures in that class. So they're giving an art credit to students. So that's my question, whether it would, whether it would show that that teacher was a journalism, was journalist, qualified to teach journalism, but not to teach the art credit itself.
And, ma'am, we have a Licensed Personnel Guide that we provide to districts, and it has every subject area listed that's taught, and it lists the appropriate licenses or endorsement areas that an individual can hold and teach that course. So, and that specific course, it's, it's kind of hard to judge unless I knew the specific coding, but bottom line, there are certain codes that are set aside for art teachers that are, that'll require that art endorsement, and it won't, if someone that holds a journalism endorsement teaches it, it's going to kick them out and list them and say they're not appropriate to teach that, that subject area.
That's, that's my question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Before I start with the Licensed Personnel Report, I'll give you a little background. So the Licensed Personnel Report, or EDCS, opened to districts last October, and districts had through the end of April to enter assignment and demographic data or make edits to their information. The data that's in this report is a snapshot, or a snapshot glimpse that was taking, taken on May 28th of licensed personnel in Kansas as of that day. So the numbers listed on here, the total number of licensed personnel in Kansas for the 2013-14 school year is 44,152. school year is 44,152. And then, if we break that down into gender, there were 33,163 females, which is about 75% of the total, and 10,989 males, which represents about 25% of the, the total. And we were up from last year. Last year, we had 43,973 educators The next category we're going to cover is entrance, entrance codes. So, districts report the entrance status of each licensed employee entering into the school year. For the 2013-14 school year, if you look up at your chart, it's hard to see, but on the far right-hand side, it's highlighted in blue. But, but that's the, this current year's report. And next to it is the 2012-13. The largest number or percentage of personnel are, of course, returning employees, which accounted for 39,335, or 89.09% of licensed staff entering this 2013-14 school year. We did have a small number of educators, about 3.82% that changed Kansas districts. 1,913 new teachers were hired, and of that, 1,664 were graduates of Kansas institutions. The next, next category we want to cover is ethnicity. Ethnicity and race are reported for all Licensed Personnel. The reporting categories require an individual to identify themselves first by the ethnic group, Hispanic or Latino, or, or non-Hispanic or Latino. And then, secondly, they have to report one or more racial groups. And those groups are American Indian, Alaska Native, Asian, Native Hawaii, or other Pacific Islander, Black or African American, or White. And this slide, it lists the ethnicity data across the stra, across the state. So, 2.2.4% of educators identified themselves as Hispanic or Latino, and 97.7%, 97.76% of educators identified themselves as non-Hispanic Latino. Now, on the next couple of slides, we will go into more detail about each ethnicity category, so it'll be covered in more detail. Yes.
Sally Cobble.
No.
Do you know if our Hispanic or Latino number of educators is increasing or decreasing?
It did, yes, ma'am. And I was
It did what?
And I was going to cover that on the next slide, it did.
Okay, I'll be quiet.
No, that's fine. And it did increase to 991 from 976 last year.
And Jenna Wall had a question.
My question was, the new teachers from Kansas College, Kansas Colleges?
Are we able to pretty well place most of our grads, or do we have, I mean, is there any figures on this? I mean, I don't know whether anyone has that data. I mean...
And that's not something I would have. I don't know, I don't know if that's something someone else would, would have in our department, but...
I mean, I was just, I was just curious, because are, is there still the shortage in the certain areas on grads and things like that? I mean, I was just curious about new teachers from Kansas, because there, for a while, they, there was a, you know, there were, we didn't need, our college grads had to go other places. But now, with the shortage, maybe they're staying. Or are there still shortages in just certain fields, or what?
The one comparison we can make is a comparison with the number of licenses we issued, the first license to Kansas grads versus the number we're hired. And that's actually on the very last slide. But we showed that we issued 1,717 compared to, those are licenses, and then this is new teachers from Kansas, 1,664.
So we're placing most of them.
Yeah, there's always some
Sure.
bleeding over into other years. But, yeah, it's, we're pretty
We're pretty well placing all of them.
It appears to be, if you compare those two figures, certainly.
That's good. Thank you.
This slide, it represents those individuals that identified themselves with the ethnicity of Hispanic or Latino, which according to federal guidelines, is Cuban, Mexican, Puerto Rican, South or Central American, or other Spanish culture or origin, regardless of race. And of the 991 Licensed Personnel reported as Hispanic Latino, that was 2.24% of our total in Kansas, 89% reported a racial group of white, 13.42% reported as American Indian, Alaska Native, and 1.51% as Black or African American. And, once again, last year, 976 educators were reported as Hispanic Latino. This slide represents those that reported the ethnicity as non-Hispanic or Latino. Of the total educators, 43,161, or 97.76% of Licensed Personnel were identified with the ethnicity, non-Hispanic Latino. Of these, 97.1% reported a racial group of white, 1.84% reported as Black or African American, and 1.07% as American Indian, American Indian or Alaska Native. And this, too, was a slight increase from last year. Last year, 42,997 educators were reported as non-Hispanic.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Quick question. These categories, are they, are they mandated? Are they statutory? Are they federal? What are they? Where do they come from?
Yes, they, they are mandated. There's a simple letter that, that we have districts send out to notify teachers that they must report this information to us. And as far as the specific regulation or guidelines, I'd have to get that to you. I don't have that right now.
I'd like to know where that comes from. Thank you.
Okay. Federal, okay. It is the federal reporting department.
Yeah, that's, that's big. I'd like to narrow it down and know where it comes from.
Okay. All right, the next slide is about age grouping. So, staff is able to link data entered in by each district into EDCS, or the Licensed Personnel Report, to the birthdate, birthdate of educators based on our Educator Licensor Center System that I discussed earlier, where we issue licenses. This table shows the breakdown by age groups of our Licensed Personnel in Kansas. Reviewing the data, we see that 28% of Licensed Personnel are 34 years or younger. And we feel it's, you know, it's important to retain this pool of teachers in the field of education. That way, it enables the state to replenish those teachers 50 and over as they prepare to retire in the next few years. And if we compare to the 2012-2013 data, those age groups up to age 45 show a slight increase. It's hard to see on this chart. It's, it's basically, when you're looking at the chart, age 20 to 24 is on the left-hand side to the top, and then, age increases as you go down. But there's a slight increase. And then, age groups 45 to 64, they show a slight decrease in percentages. So, bottom line, the youngest age in the groups, and the youngest age group is increasing. And I would also like to point out that, in the columns where you see number listed, that is the actual number of educators, it's not assignments. As we go further into this report, we're going to switch over to some assignment information, so I don't want you to get those flip-flopped. All right, and this is a graphic representation of the exact same data. It's probably easier for you to use. So, if you look on the left-hand side, moving from bottom up, you'll have the age groupings from youngest to oldest. And down on the bottom, starting from left to right, you'll have the number of educators, starting with zero, extending through 7,000.
We have a question from Sally Cobble.
Can I make the assumption from this that we are retaining teachers, or could these just be positions we're retaining, and they could have different people in them? I can't make that judgment at all.
Well, this is strictly age. When we get further into our report, we're going to go by experience. So, that could give you a better indication of if we're retaining individuals or not.
I can't make that.
In addition, for age grouping, districts also have to select an educator type. And districts must choose this educator type when they enter assignment into EDCS. And again, that assignment and the birth information is linked to our Educator Licensor Center System that we use to issue licenses. So, based on the data that's gathered, personnel 50 years and older teach about 33.25% of general education assignments, and 42.94% of special education assignments. So, if you look at this quad chart, I hope it's not that difficult for you to see, we'll start with the, the top-left quadrant with teachers. If you look to the far left, it has, starting at the bottom, and moving up, it starts with zero and goes through 14,000. That is assignments, and it's not educators. If you move down to the bottom, moving from left to right, starting, the age group is listed, starting with the youngest, 20 to 24, and extending until 65 and over. And then, we have it broken down into the four categories of teachers, special educators, principals, and superintendents. And, no, okay. And pending your questions, I'll be followed by Lori Adams, who will continue with the report.
Okay, we're going to move into experience. And this table displays a breakdown of the Kansas Licensed Personnel and groupings by years of experience. Licensed Personnel with five to nine years of experience breaks out with the largest percentage of 18.57%. The numbers show that teachers with less than 10 years of total experience is 40.09% of the total. Teachers with 10 to 19 years of experience is 39, or, sorry, is 29.35%. And teachers with 20 or more years of experience is 30.6%. Again, this graphic represents the, or presents a visual picture of the distribution of experience by groupings of our current educators. The larger portion of those with less than 10 years of experience makes it essential to provide continuing mentoring and professional development support to retain these teachers. As we did with the age groupings, we divided out the experience based on educator type. Looking at the educator types linked to years of experience, shows that the Licensed Personnel with 20 years or more of experience teach 29.02% of general education assignments, and 28.29% of special education assignments. Licensed Personnel with less than 10 years of experience teach 42.27% of the general education assignments, and 40.47% of the special education assignments. We pulled some new data this year that we haven't presented in the past, and we specifically looked at teachers who are in their first three years of teaching. Specifically looking at these teachers, the numbers have increased from 5,023 to, in the 2010-2011 school year, to 6,646 in the 2013-14 school year. When districts report this information, if they report zero years of experience, that is their first year of experience. So, they're reporting how many years they have actually completed teaching. So, that's why we say first to three years, and you see zero, one, This information shows the types of licenses held by teachers in their first three years of teaching. Of the teachers in Kansas reported as being in their first three years of teaching, 4,071 hold a professional-level teaching license. Looking, looking at the assignments reported by the teachers who are in their first three years of teaching, shows that 337 were in assignments that they were waived for. If a staff member is deleted from the LPR, and exit reason must be selected, this chart displays the exit reasons linked to the educator type. The two largest exit reasons within and across each educator type are move to another Kansas district and retirement. This table allows a closer look at trend data for educator-type teacher, only for the selected fields displayed. Two columns to note, data indicated, indicates retirement increases for the 2010 to 2012, or, I'm sorry, 2010 to 2011, and then dropped again for the 11-12 school year. And then, it has continued to increase for the 12-13 and 13-14 school years. Reduction in force continues to drop after experiencing increases, an increase to 350 in the 10-11 school year. In the 13-14 school year, there were 79 educators leaving the district due to reduction in force.
Jim McNeese has a question.
Thank you. Can you tell me what termination means?
Termination is that the district has asked the educator to leave.
It's a non-renewal?
Non-renewal, yes.
And Steve Roberts has a question.
Thank you. My question was similar, actually. I have two. But the non-renewal could be for cause or for any reason?
We don't speculate on why they were terminated. It was, they were terminated, so non-renewal.
Just a non-renewal for any reason?
Right.
Okay. Couple of slides ago, you had a category that had 458 in it? I think it was two slides before?
Yes.
Could you elaborate on what that means, licensed unqualified?
Yes, licensed unqualified is when a staff member is licensed for one thing, and they're teaching in another thing. An example of this would be a, a teacher who is licensed to teach English Language Arts 6 to 12, and they're in an assignment that requires a business 6 to 12 endorsement.
Carolyn Campbell.
Thank you, ma'am. On this slide, since it's up there now, never licensed, have those been resolved, or?
We will talk about this a little bit later, as a total of all teachers in Kansas. So, this is part of a bigger number that we'll see later on. Some have been resolved. We can't say whether these 20 have been resolved, or which 20 of, or which of the, the bigger number has been resolved, but some have.
Thank you. Is this strictly public, or do we have parochial and private in here as well?
The data presented today is strictly public data. The data compiled for new teacher retention represents the educators that were given an entrance code of new teacher for either Kansas or out-of-state colleges. We are able to track each cohort of teachers by their teacher identification number throughout their career. A closer look at the data reveals that the retention rate for the first to second year of each cohort of new teachers, which is in the darker green on our, on your screen, has risen from 98.24% in the 2009-10 cohort to 100.27% with the 2013-14 cohort. This percentage is above 100 due to how the data is reported and polled. Like I said, when they enter their informa, the, the years of experience in the EDCS, they put zero for the first year, one for the second year, two for the third year. The data, then, when we pull this, it looks at that number that the districts enter for the total years of experience, looking for the second year indicating a one. So, if a district put in a one for a first-year teacher, meaning they were in their first year, instead of a zero, which is what the system looks for a first year, then it would pull in this group of being a returning second-year teacher. So, as you can see, though, with the counts for the first to third year, which is in the lighter color green on your screen, the retention rate for the lighter color green on your screen, the retention rate for, has risen from 90.47 to 93.15. And as you can see, last year, we also had a number above 100%, but that's kind of equaled out to where the numbers now, for the third year, represent a trend that we would expect to see. The average salary of all beginning teachers reported as zero years of experience is $36,508, which is slightly above the $35,835 from the previous year, from the 12, 13 school year. The state needs to continue to strive to improve our educator's salary. The bar graph here charts the average salary tied to educator type. Elementary and preschool teachers show the lowest average salary as, at $48,396. Average age of this group is 41 years, 41.66 years. So between 41, 42-year-olds is the average age for making $48,396. In the 2013-14 school year, we have the highest salary rate that we've had in the last four years, as the trend goes back up. And for more detailed information about our salaries in Kansas, on the summary report, you can look at the Section 3 salary charts, A and B.
I have a question. What's a school specialist in your categorization?
School specialists are the library media specialist, reading specialist, school counselors, school psychologist.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, moving into assignment data. So, just to remind you, these are assignments, they're not individual counts. An individual may be duplicated either within or across the qualification categories. Teaching assignments are grouped into broad subject categories for data reporting purposes. The licensed qualification of staff in these assignments are broken out on the chart that you see on the screen. To give you some definitions of what some of the terminology on the, the chart refer to, fully licensed means the staff member has a full Kansas license in the assignment area they're teaching. Licensed unqualified means the staff member is licensed as a teacher in Kansas but does not hold an endorsement in the area of the assignment. This is the same as the example I gave earlier, that the English teacher's teaching business. Provisionally licensed means the staff member holds a provisional license in the area of their assignment. So this would be an English teacher who's working to complete a business program, they're teaching business, and they hold a provisional license for business. Just of note, there's 96.47% of our elementary assignments that are designated as fully licensed. Okay, each year, when the licensed staff reported in the licensed personnel report are linked to the licensure database, a group of not-licensed educators are identified. The data includes public school staff only. Remember that the licensed personnel report captures a snapshot of data at the end of the school year. So data on not-licensed teachers has been broken down into two categories. Reported staff who had held a license, but whose license has expired, or was expired on the day of the snapshot. And secondly, reported staff for whom there were no licensed, licensure records. And again, a reminder that the snapshot was taken on May 28. So at the time of the snapshot, 40 staff members were identified as expired licenses. This is down substantially from last year. We had 142 teachers that had expired licenses, and that's a lot, thanks to our board for taking an interest in that and taking the steps to making sure that districts are getting their, their teachers to renew their licenses. Of these 40 that were on this year's report, eight were found to have a pending application with the TLA office and were renewed without a gap or break in their license. An additional eight of the 40 staff identified were, with expired licenses, had submitted a renewal application and have, have been renewed, although there was a gap in their, or a break in their license. As of September 11, 22 of the 40 still have an expired license. The second group of non-licensed staff on the day of the snapshot were 35 staff who had no licensure records. Of the 35, it was discovered that four were reported by the district with an incorrect social security number and indeed were licensed. An additional five were found to have pending licenses, and seven currently have application statuses in the TLA office. The remaining 19 staff remain unlicensed. Remember, there were 20 first-to-third-year teachers who were listed as never being licensed. These teachers are part of the 35 total. Some of these teachers could be in the groups that have since applied for a Kansas license, but we don't know which teachers necessarily were.
Don't we have a statute or something that says, if you're not licensed, you shouldn't be paid?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
And do we ever send reminders out? Thank you, Steve. I appreciate that. But do we ever send anything out that is a reminder that they shouldn't be paid?
We, Dale's grinning. They're reminded continuously, but every time, once we run this, they get personal phone calls. We actually call them and visit with them personally and let them know who the individual is, they need to address the, so, but they're reminded continuously throughout the year.
I bet you, since Tom Krebs is in the back of the room, he would probably like to hear that maybe the Kansas Association of School Boards could help us with that by putting a little reminder to their board members. Because I bet you, not all board members know that statute. And maybe we could get a little help from a friend. That's just a comment, not to you, but to somebody in the audience. Dale, did you want me to be quiet?
Most school districts, what they do, they have a little computer program, and they notify them at six months, at four months, at three months, at two months. And a lot of them, when it gets down to one month, they go pay a personal visit.
Well, I, I think we're very generous.
Most districts have a system in addition, and Scott tells them all the time. We talk about it a lot.
Well, most of us that are licensed to open, we have to display that license, and you can't pass a, you can't practice a day past it. Or anything that you do pass that is subject to an attorney.
Okay, moving into highly qualified teacher data. We report this data as a requirement of the ESEA and CLB. The data in this slide compares the percentages of core content classes taught by highly qualified teachers in high and low-poverty schools. Elementary and secondary buildings were sorted by total free and reduced lunches, lunch enrollment, to determine the socioeconomic status of the building. The top chart represents the highly qualified classes by elementary buildings, and the bottom chart shows the secondary buildings. 96.34% of all core content assignments in elementary buildings in Kansas are considered highly qualified. 90.23% of all core content assignments in secondary buildings in Kansas are considered The restricted license pathway to, is the alternative licensure program in Kansas for individuals with a degree or equivalent coursework in the subject area they are hired to teach. Professional education coursework is completed during the first two years, as the teacher is supported and mentored by the district and higher education institution while the, while teaching full-time. There has been a decrease in the number of restricted license holders over the last few SBR 913142 allows a school accredited through QPA to request a licensure waiver to assign a teacher to a, to teach in a subject or at a grade level not authorized by the teacher's Kansas teaching license. Waivers require that the teacher has a plan of study for completing a program in the new subject area, and that they are enrolled in at least one course from that plan. There were 561 waivers approved for the 2013-14 school year. 413, or 73.6% of the waivers were in the area of adaptive special education. 41, or 7.3% were approved for early childhood unified assignments. Approximately 94.1% of all waivers were special education assignments, including early childhood unified and gifted.
Kathy Bush has a question.
So overall, if you kind of add those categories together, I bet 95% of that is special education.
Mm-hmm.
Which is all the more reason we need that direct entry special ed that we're looking at. That's just amazing. That's just a comment.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sally Cobble.
Where are we on that direct entry and discussion? Oh, yeah. Okay, so now the schools can, well, tomorrow the schools can.
Tomorrow the schools will be able.
To do it. Okay, thank you.
The staff and teacher education and licensure issues an average of 20,000 licenses annually. Each column of data here represents the dates from July 1st through July 30th of their respective school year. So you can see how many licenses in each area, each, each type of license that here at the state TLA processes throughout each fiscal year. And that's the end of the report and the data that we have to share with you today, and I'd be more than happy to entertain any questions that you have.
Were there any further questions? Guess not. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This was a lot, a lot of numbers to look at. Well, now we're ready for Dale and Craig.
Good afternoon, or evening, whatever it is. The, last month, you brought up about requirements for basic vision screening and hearing. Remember that? And I, we included in your packet, and just very briefly, what the law provides, that basic vision screening without charge to every pupil shall be a once-over-two-years, and hearing, I think, is upon entrance and once-over-three-years. So, and I included that in your board packet. Craig, I want to go with that, yeah. I want to, I just want to mention one more thing, because it fits into what you just got through talking about. We just got to, several of us, Craig and I and Brad, talking to quite a few school people, and the one surprise that we picked up, we picked some of this up in budget workshops. You know, in the past, those of you who've been in the school business, elementary teachers, you didn't even advertise for them much. You had them, and now, there's, we've ended up with a shortage in some areas in, in elementary. We had a district north of Topeka that was advertising in July for a fourth-grade teacher, 30 minutes, year-old district. We had east of Hutchkin out at Burton. He said, two years ago, I think he had 100 applicants, and this year he had five, and two or three of them out of state, and then they weren't qualified, really. So the pool's really changing. The other day, over at the K-12 Student Performance Efficiency Committee, Alan Cunningham said, Dodge City, first time ever, they started the year with six long-term subs, and Garden City started with seven. So it's, it's concerning, if we're down to that, and I toss this in for free, the, our average teacher salary now is, and I can give you that if you wanted sometimes, is we've dropped to 42nd in the nation. And that could be having a bearing. What Craig just passed out to you is the agenda on the K-12 Student Performance and Efficiency Commission, and the things they're going to be discussing. They're meeting on Thursday and Friday, and the agenda is fairly thorough. We've had quite a few questions and requests for stuff as it leads up to this meeting. There's some of the recommends, some of these comments that is in there has already been, the law's already been changed. And so, like tenure, the tenure law has changed. So there's several things, capital outlay, you could, they've made amendments to that law also, so when they go through that, well, those things will have to be considered. But anyway, there's quite a few things that they're going to talk about. A lot of it came out of the Governor's Efficiency Committee, like two years ago? Two years ago, and they're going to walk through that, and it's, it's a pretty broad spectrum of information. And I think it's, it's be important for you to take a look at all that, and, and there's some, it'll be interesting. If you have input, the members of that committee would be glad to listen to you. The other thing is, I wanted to mention is that, is there any thing that you've come up with, and we got oodles of time, that you want to talk about that's not budget-related? Any legislation that you want to talk about? And some of that we can talk about later. I know one thing is going to come up in the Efficiency Committee, is if you want to extend the LOB percentage from 31 to 33, why you have to have a mail-voted election. And some, there's a lot of people, that they like, the election, they're not arguing with, but they like to have a regular election so they don't have to pay for it. So that, that issue will come up. We heard a lot about that at USA and budget workshops. Other than that, Craig, is there anything else we need to share with them? Do you think of? We're getting, if we didn't know better, you would think there was something special this fall. We're getting an awfully lot of requests. We delivered one yesterday, day before, 95,000 lines of information. It took quite a while. Don't know who it's for, but anyway, it was, it was a lot of information, it was all dealing with salaries. But, and 9, 9, 10, and 13, 14. So anyway, it took quite a while to put it together, but we've got it done, it's, they've got it.
Just a minute. Oh, okay. Were there?
Any other comments or questions?
Oh, Sally, Sally Cobble.
Little trouble communicating here. I got knocked off somehow, so I don't have a thing anymore. Madam Chairman, I don't know whether you want to deal with this today or tomorrow during legislative comments, but we got something from KASB today on their, what they're looking at as a legislative committee to support. And I haven't had a chance to review all of this. My comment in reading through some of this is they've been very supportive of the direction that we're trying to go on this, and if we were, if any of you were at that event, it was very, well, we had a good time, but I thought we got. but I thought we got quite a bit done. And they let us all put in. My question is, on some of these that's on their legislative comments, which I really like, I'm not real sure they should go to legislature but come to us on whose responsibility is required. And I didn't know, if we want to really make teeth in some of these things, the things that we think are truly legislative, we might want to read through this and help by putting that in our legislative for next year, is what I'm thinking.
Madam Chairman, food for thought. Brad could put it in a Friday letter, or we could put it in the Board Agenda next month. Everybody will have the information. Then you can talk about that because you've got plenty of time if you'd like to.
Yeah, I'd like to do that. But I think they've made some good inroads on some of these things that we might want to help support. But at the same time, I think we actually have the ownership in some of this and not the legislature. So that would be my comment to it.
We'll try to make an effort to get copy to everybody. Okay? Any other suggestions, words of wisdom, or comments? Okay, thank you very kindly.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready to hear from our Communications Committee, Jim and Sally.
Go for it, Jim.
Thank you. Sally.
You're welcome, Jim.
First of all, in your packets, there is a golden rod sheet in there that has information from Legislative Postcard Campaign that we had last year, talking about it again. If you would be so nice as to get that out. As you're getting that out, I would comment that there's three themes that we have there. And this is just a focus point, as we talked about last year. This is Kansas, Kansas Ready, Learning, Thinking, and Doing. Just as a central point for, you know, kind of gathering around as a central theme. As a committee, we kind of focused on Kansas Ready. And we're asking for your input. What do you think? Have you read the descriptors? Any comments, any suggestions, any? Yes, Steve?
I like the idea of Ready for Life, Ready for Life After High School. Not to denigrate, you know, college and career ready, but we have so many citizens who will maybe go to college and never have a career, or have a career and never go to college, or have neither one, and these are first-class citizens. So I like the idea of, I don't want to suggest that we abandon college and career ready, but I like to enhance Ready After High School. I like that.
It's a problem with having committees, Steve.
We will take that into account.
As you're mulling that over on the back, there are ideas for information that we would place on these cards, postcards. We're going to have new leadership, new board members, award winners, recognition as we go through the year. We'll be revising our goals, you know, next year. We're going to begin the college and career ready standards, you know, process. There's, and of course, probably one of the most, which I think I like the best about this, is honoring our Kansas educators and kids, you know, students, you know, through this. Whenever we can do that, that's what we need to do. These are some, and there are more suggestions at the bottom for you to, if you put those and you want to write those in or email them to Peggy, that would be wonderful. We'd like to come back soon and bring you the recommendations we have for this next year. We'll be starting on January 12th and going through the session as we did last year, each week, putting out our postcards. I've had several legislators actually ask me, you know, if we're going to do that again. I said, sure. Did you like it? They said, yeah, it was pretty nice. It was, you know, it came to look for it. Also, I would say this, you know, I've had several superintendents and board members out in my area who have given feedback. I'm probably more tuned to it since it's part of something we're doing as our committee, but it was received quite favorably. In fact, we've been asked to look at expanding our email address and our listserv in terms of how it's getting sent out. We really, really want to leave that up to you, how you can connect in your district for that. Ken?
Jim, probably everybody did, but I sent them out to all my superintendents every month.
Thank you.
And they were, I got a lot of comments about they appreciated them and thought they were nice work.
Thank you. Yeah, it's not going to change the world, but it is going to provide, you know, another avenue of communication about the great things that are happening in Kansas, as we talked about last year.
Jim?
Thank you. Ken brings to mind about the postcards. I also send them to my superintendents, but I also put them on Facebook. And I got lots of comments.
Yes, I did see them.
Friends of mine outside Kansas even, I mean, you know, people in Kansas liked them, but I thought it was kind of neat they were impressed.
You're just becoming such a social media person. It's so great.
I am. I tweet. See, I'm watch following Twitter right now, seeing what Tom Creds is saying about us.
Is he still, is he still here?
Yeah, he sold the bat.
Yes, and the ways that we can provide that information, and in social media, having information that is fast, quick, you know, it's not wordy, is very important. And the cards themselves are attractive. So yes, thank you very much. We can do many things with it. It's multi-user friendly. And that's what we designed it for. And I'm going to get back on Facebook and put it on Facebook, that would be good, and Twitter, and, you know, I saw it out there on stuff.
Well, Tammy Bartel even used it on PTA. I got a kick out of that.
So again, you know, we are putting this together, and Sally will be working with the staff and team here to put these together. We should have a recommendation to go. Hopefully in November, that'll make it all happen and be ready for January. It's a very low-cost, high-impact, you know, very positive campaign. You know, so thank you for your comments about that. I look forward to any ideas that you have for themes or for this. And Steve, you know, I take to heart that, you know, the Ready, you know, for the world, you know, that postcard, that's something to think about. You know, it's certainly part of the whole Kansas Ready theme.
You know, Jim, one of our speakers, one of the teachers, a couple of months ago, she had a quote that she said we could use anytime. Our Kansas kids are ready for the world. We hope that the world is ready for our Kansas kids. You know, I thought that was kind of cute that, you know, she gave us permission to use sometimes.
Oh, great.
And that's what Steve's talking about.
Okay. The next thing that I have for you is basically, on the website, we have a place for us. And it's in your packet, I believe. Is it not? No, we're going to give it out to you. A couple of you, even I, have had trouble getting back on there because we leave the meeting, and how do I get back onto this website to get those tools that are available to me on our website? And that's going through the hand-waving. So I'm going to let Peggy talk to you about how to get on here. And then we're giving you instructions that are based for you. So each one of these that we're passing around here now, make sure you take yours. And you just can't take any. I guess you could and still get on there, but it's basically the hand-waving and modification where you can get on, like, I've already got a couple of dates to visit colleges, faculties, and classes. And the PowerPoint, I'm looking forward to using, but I need to be able to access it. And there's other tools relative to, you know, the PTA and some of the things we talk about here at the board that are going to be, have been useful to me. I don't know about you, but sometimes I forget how to do it by the time I get home. So we're going to have a little brief, because a couple of you have been kind enough to be upfront and say, now, where's this stuff? And how do I get it?
Couple things. If you want to test it here as a demonstration, it's the same application where your speaking order hand-waving tool is. And if you'll open that, you'll see resources in the blue bar.
Go to your hand-waving. That's open on your computer right now. Bring it up in the screen.
And in that same line, blue line, it says resources. And when you select that...
Where does it say resources?
On the blue bar at the top. Next.
You may have to enlarge it.
Oh, okay. I'm trying here.
And what we have listed there are some fact sheets that would be...
Okay, wake up.
Current topics, student data, teacher licensure, the new changes, the PowerPoint for those of you who are speaking to the teacher prep programs, and then some of the videos from the National PTA that Tammy Bartels had offered. We've downloaded them. The instructions that we just passed out is if you want to access it from your home, because Bill always is kind enough to have the hand-waving tool already up for you guys. So to access it at home, you'll follow just the simple instructions there, enter your login, and then you'll see that same screen to access those things, to either print or use how you need. Are you following?
Yes. Anytime you think that we run into something that you think is a board, this is a private place for us. The public can't access this. So if you think there's something that would be advantageous to have on here, I don't know about you guys, but sometimes as we get things, I forget where I file them. But maybe if they were on here, I wouldn't have to call Peggy every time I wanted them or whatever. So if there's something that comes along that you want on, let us know and we'll put it on. The other thing, I'm not real sure if you know that you have access to, is if you go under Brad's name, you can always get any of the PowerPoints and presentations that he does out where maybe we aren't, if you're doing a presentation and you need to borrow and steal on it. So, Jim, I'm sorry.
No, very good. And going to Brad's location, I'm not real sure how we'd get to that.
You just go and...
Just go to Brad.
On the agency's homepage...
Yes.
And then it says teams or divisions, go under learning services, click on the title, learning service, that goes to my page. So all my USA, KASB, every presentation I give, I post those PowerPoints for schools to use so they can take slides. All those slides that Scott and Beth shared today, those are all out there. So you can feel free to steal any of my PowerPoint slides, whatever you want on those.
Good reminder.
Is there a password that we need to use to get on this? It's our password.
That's what you got. And you have your own password, so...
That's on that.
Yes. It's the same as when you get on the hand-raising.
It's going to hand-waving at home, but going to the resources section rather than speaking order at home.
Bill will be very sad if we all learn how to bring up our own hand-raising.
I don't think so. But, very good. So we just thought that that would be an added opportunity for those of you like me who, I get the information here and then when I get home, it's like, okay, how did I do that? You know, this is, I've got a cheat sheet now. Okay? The final thing, last year, we had a meeting with the Senate and House Ed Committees over in the, across the street in the Capitol. And, you know, it wasn't, it was nice. I think we had about 13 people there, 13 of the committee members. And I have been asked by a couple of legislators if we're going to be doing that again. And I would like to do that again, but I'd like to do it in a different format. And I'd like to be able to bring back a proposal to you about a different format and date relative to how we do that, rather than sitting in a quasi-avocarial, you know, situation or, you know, a table apart would be to be more involved in personal communication at tables. And I've actually talked to Steve Abrams about this, and he and I are going to be presenting a possible opportunity for us, you know, not before the session, but possibly during the session. You know, and he was very enthusiastic about it. And we're going to continue, put a little plan together, and he's going to bring it back to some folks on their side. And I'll bring it back to here, and hopefully we'll be able to move forward and set something up for the beginning of the session. Does that work for you guys? I'm, you know, getting a couple yet, okay? Good. We'll move from there. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. I again want to thank Jim and Sally for all the work they've done to create new and innovative ways of reaching out to communicate our message. So thank you again. You've done outstanding work for us. Well, this brings us to our consent agenda. You will remember, we revised it this morning to add a 16... Okay, Sally, what...
16, it was in addition to 16K on the consent.
So I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. Kathy Bush moves to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Dina Horst. Is there discussion? Steve Roberts?
I was just wondering if Janet was plugged in to the request between USD 500 and the School of the Blind, if you knew more about it than what we have right here.
No, I don't. In fact, I meant to contact him and ask him, and I did not do that. I apologize.
No, it's all good.
I'm not familiar.
I think he's looking it up.
Okay.
I meant to ask him. In fact, today, I forgot. I'm too excited about this.
Other questions or comments? Then let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, that's a 10-0 vote. I believe that brings us to the end of our agenda for today. So we will adjourn and see you again in the morning. Thank you.
16H.